Good afternoon, everyone. Today is August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is a one P M. City of Prescott City Council Study Session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And the record will reflect that councilmember rescuing its excuse from the meeting.
City Clerk, would you like to read our agenda item today, please?
Presentation and discussion regarding downtown beautification services and options regarding future initiatives. Hello, Mayor, members of council. My name is Christina Vinkley, and I am the Tourism Manager. Today, I'm going to talk to you about downtown beautification. We're going to discuss who we are as the Office of Tourism, our mission, how this collaboration with Public Works came to be, our funding source, and then we're going to go over the extensive community feedback we received regarding this project. Our mission as the Office of Tourism is to attract visitors to Prescott and to enhance our community's quality of life by inspiring a love and respect for our natural beauty, rich history, and hometown atmosphere. I want to take a chance to define beautification. Beautification is the process of making visual improvements to a town, city, or urban area. Projects are often undertaken by city councils to refurbish the downtown areas to boost tourism and other commerce. The vision of our proposal before you today is to hire a team of local people who will enhance the downtown area through increased sweeping, vacuuming, power washing, and trash removal. Before our office takes on any projects, we like to review them against our guiding principles, which were set forth by our strategic plan. There are seven of them, and I believe that this proposal hits all seven of them. So if you bear with me, I'm going to read to you and explain why it hits each one. So the first one is to engage residents and industry stakeholders. Well, this project came to be because members of the community came to us and said, downtown needs this. Please look into this. The second one was enhance, enrich, and simplify the visitor experience. Well, a very clean and sparkling downtown really does enhance the experience for everybody. Our office initiative is to emphasize the quality of visitors over the quantity of tourists. And there is a difference there because we really seek to attract people who appreciate the aesthetics and the vibe and the cleanliness of our downtown and how much we put an effort on taking care of Prescott. Number four, we consider the impact of our work on existing infrastructure and community resources. Well, I don't have to tell you all that downtown is busy, and there is an impact of tourism in the downtown area. A downtown beautification proposal really helps to discover that and initiate that and kind of take care of what's happening downtown. Number five, we support the responsible use of our natural resources and assets. Downtown is one of our biggest and best assets, and we really need to preserve and protect it to the best of our ability. Number six is to enhance the quality of life and increase economic opportunity. And lastly, we seek to preserve our community's exceptional hospitality and create an environment that is welcoming to all. And again, the proposal before you, I believe, hits all seven of these, but I'm going to explain more as we go further. There's also a lot of downtown precedence for our office. Most recently, we installed the new downtown banners on all the streetlight poles. Annually, we pay for the parking garage maintenance. We pay for special events over time. We pay for the kiosk maps, the courtesy cans, those beautiful metal whiskey row archways, all paid for by the Office of Tourism. But it doesn't stop there. Annually, the Office of Tourism supports the Summer Concert Series, Hope Fest, the Fippen Western Art Show and Sale, Whiskey Row Marathon, Whiskey Offroad, the Corvette Show, Bluegrass Festival, and all of the Christmas festivities. And I want to take a moment to kind of pause and talk about how bed tax works and why I think this is an appropriate use of bed tax funds. So when visitors come to Prescott, they pay a three percent transient occupancy tax. They stay at the hotels, Airbnbs, VRBOs. They collect the tax, the state collects the tax, and they pay us back for it. The state then says, hey, Office of Tourism, please use seventy-five percent of these funds for marketing to attract more visitors to keep this cycle going. However, these funds can also be used for capital projects, recreation services, and destination management. And downtown beautification falls in under that destination management component. Bed tax can also be used for grants and special events, like I just mentioned. Then we are supposed to set aside a contingency for continued destination support. And when we do this and do this well, the whole community benefits. We have a fund balance. So years of conservative spending and over then projected revenues have created a nice little cushion for us. So we estimate that the proposal before you is about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in expenses annually. We have two years of funding set aside and fund balance ready for this. And then our vision is to bake it into our annual operating costs going forward to fund this project indefinitely. Now, there are some pros to this is this proposal offsets expenses to the general fund. Public Works will get back an employee, and the impact of tourism on the downtown area will be directly paid for by tourism dollars. Meet Kevin. Kevin is the sole employee responsible for the downtown area. All of downtown is taken care of by Kevin and Kevin alone. He works three A M. to eleven A M. Friday through Monday. And I'm told Kevin loves his job, and he's very good at it. But even though Kevin loves his job, these things still happen. John and I received this picture as a text message over the past holiday weekend. This happens. This happens in every city. It is an enormous amount of trash after a very busy weekend. But again, Kevin is only one person. And in short, that's how this collaboration with Public Works came to be. We had a fund balance. We heard there was a need in the community. Public Works also has a need, so this was a win-win for everybody. We pitched the idea to our Tourism Advisory Committee, and they unanimously approved. Let's dive into community feedback. We hosted a survey on Participate Prescott for six weeks. We did a press release, an article in the Courier, and then weekly posts on social media to propose or to promote this survey. We said our goal with this proposal is to enhance, improve, and preserve downtown Prescott through committee projects focused on streetscapes, landscaping, maintenance, cleaning, and aesthetics. I'm very happy to report that during those six weeks, eight hundred and forty-two people visited the site, and four hundred and ten of those people contributed to the survey. And here's the results. The first question we asked was to rank the aspects of downtown beautification in the order of importance to you. Number one, across the board, was clean streets and sidewalks. Number two was feeling safe. Now, you might be like, how is feeling safe part of downtown beautification? Well, there's a lot of things you can do with lighting and good street areas and no trash that makes people feel safe. No overflowing trash cans was number three. Pedestrian accessibility, and then community events, trimmed landscaping, public art, and flower baskets, and good wayfinding were still important and made the list, but they were just lower down on the rankings.
Councilman Moore.
Christina, just have a quick question.
Yes.
The categories that are on here, did you provide those categories, or could they have, was there a place for open responses, too?
We provided those categories based on what we saw on other destinations, part of the downtown beautification initiatives. So there was not an option then for them to add their own. But there are open-ended questions where they could respond to those general questions later.
One of the reasons I'm asking this question is because later today, we have on our voting agenda something about art. And I know art's a really big part of the Courthouse Plaza, for example. We have a lot of historic cowboy art, and we have the timeline, and we have the flags. I mean, there's some things that really beautify the downtown area, but there was no mention of art in the questions. And it just seems like art might be something to consider as one of the comments or feedback on art in the community.
Absolutely. And actually, art was... Oh, I'm going the wrong way. Public art and flower baskets. So it's number two towards the bottom. And we did lump murals, statues, things like that in there. And you'll notice when we get to the open-ended questions, people mentioned that they do love it, but it wasn't the top priority in...
Thank you. I just wanted to raise that because I am on the Civic Enhancement Committee, and we talk about art in public places. So thank you.
Art is very important to me as well. Next question we asked was, how would you rate the overall cleanliness of downtown? The average score was three point eight four out of five. And you might be thinking, that's pretty good. It's certainly passing, but we would love a five-star downtown. So we see room for improvement. We asked, how would you rate the overall maintenance of downtown Prescott? About the same score. We saw an average of three point eight three. We asked, how would you rate the level and frequency of trash pickup in downtown Prescott?
Councilman Gambogi. Christina, could you go back two slides? When they say that, talk about cleanliness, do you get any idea what they mean by cleanliness?
Yes. We left it open and kind of general here just so we can get a score, engage people on what their interpretation of cleanliness was. And then in the open-ended questions, we let them expand on what do you think needs to be cleaned?
And so that you'll cover that later?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
How would you rate the overall maintenance of downtown Prescott? The average score was three point eight three. How would you rate the level and frequency of trash pickup in downtown Prescott? Little bit of a lower score here at three point five six. And how would you rate the level and frequency of power washing in downtown Prescott at three point two six, the lowest one yet? Then we got into the open-ended questions. And we started with, what is your favorite thing about downtown? And I want to explain the slide that you're looking at. So the top bar is the sentiment, and it'll tell you if the answer is skewed positive, mixed, negative, or neutral. And this one skewed mostly neutral on the response because it's a fairly happy question, if you ask me. The number one, across the board, people love the events that happen downtown. The courthouse was specifically mentioned. People love the walkability of downtown Prescott. Number four, people mentioned loving the historical element, like Council Moore said, the different statues, the different buildings, all of that was tied into historical elements. People mentioned the things to do. People mentioned the specific trees, and then the hometown small-town feel. This is important for staff to know because that helps us know what to focus on. This next one, open-ended, what civic improvement would you like to see? Now, number one was parking improvements. I'm sure you guys are shocked by this. But with parking improvements, it's, parking is up there twice because if they had an idea or a suggestion, or they said they want more ADA spaces or different style of parking, it went under parking improvements. Number two, people said things were pretty great, but they want improved cleanliness. If they mentioned clean or cleanliness, or can you clean X, Y, Z, it got lumped there. People want more walkability, more parking, increased accessibility. And I want to explain that this one means crosswalks, bike paths, options for just getting away, getting around downtown in a more effective manner.
Christina?
Yes?
Was there any mention of parking enforcement? They talked about parking improvements?
I'd be happy to show all of you the extensive responses. I went through all four hundred and ten contributions, and I was really pleased by the results. People took time to enter their responses to the survey. If they had a great idea, they had data and references to back it up. And they didn't just say, I want this. It was, I want this because, or I think this is valuable because. If you want some extra light reading, I'd be happy to send it your way. And then traffic issues kind of covers that, too. So that was one that just got lumped under civic improvements. And then people mentioned wanting more flowers. And this one, we said, is there anything else you would like city staff to know? So again, we're seeing in a third question that improved cleanliness is needing, needed. Number two, people said, thank you. And number three, people said, great job. And I'm so surprised that four hundred and ten people took an opportunity to thank city staff and to show recognition. As a city staff member, I take a lot of pride in this, and I'm so honored to serve this community. And the fact that those two are called out separately means a lot to me in this survey. Number four, people had concerns about tourism. And this ranged from, we really want to protect what we have. We love what we have. We don't want to see it overrun or overpopulated or changed too much. We're worried about too many people. So all of those things were kind of lumped into this title. And as the Office of Tourism, we hear you, and we really want to have projects like this come forward so we can kind of start mitigating that and start addressing things that could be caused by concerns of tourism. Number five, parking improvements was mentioned again. Number six, traffic issues was mentioned again. And number seven, people mentioned, please preserve and protect the historical elements. We did see a lot of comments about some of the development that's being proposed downtown, which wasn't really relevant to this survey, but that did get mentioned under the historical elements of this survey. Now, I'm going to bring it all back together. So our proposal is we wanted to tell you about this idea of downtown beautification. And then there is an opportunity to use a Yavapai County Cooperative Contract that's already out for bid, or we could go for an RFP. The contract, however it manifests, would be paid for by tourism and then managed by Public Works. We are going to ask our contractor to cover Zone One. The north boundary would be Willis Street. The east boundary would be Marina. The south boundary would be Carlton, and the west boundary would be Granite Street. Now, to bring it all back, the reason we're bringing this to you is because we are going from an individual effort to a team effort. We're looking to have the contractor provide all of their own equipment, which means city-owned equipment would be freed up to do other things. We're looking at an expanded area of service. Public Works gets to recoup an FTE position through this proposal to you guys. We're looking at offsetting the expenses to the general fund by doing both of those things. And funding is available through bed tax. And then lastly, community stakeholders and staff agree that this proposal of services is needed.
Councilman Moore.
I'm probably jumping the gun, but what happens to Kevin?
Kevin will always have a home as long as he wants to own the city of Prescott. And I don't mean to speak for Brian, but he will be happily reallocated to other services within Public Works.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilman Gambogi. Christina, so Kevin goes to Brian, and we hire a contractor. Are they going to work from three in the morning to eleven like Kevin did?
As far as the specific hours, I'm not sure. That might be something Brian can speak to, but what we did decide as staff is the need is Friday through Monday. It covers most of the events, the heaviest amount of traffic downtown. And then we're going to leave it up to Public Works to manage their contractor to find out if there's other days, other times, multiple runs for them to make sure that it's always to the standard that we hold them to.
Another question I have for you, in Public Works, when they're picking up trash in the neighborhood, everybody's in a uniform and a clean truck. Now, do we have any standards for this contractor that someone would be in a clean-looking uniform and a clean vehicle?
That's a great question, and it's something we can take as a recommendation if it's something that's important to you. I'm assuming whoever we hire has their own logo and branding, but we can look into that.
Well, I think a cleanly worker kind of fits in with a clean downtown.
Absolutely. I'll take that as direction.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Christina, I appreciate the detail of this presentation. I know you, I think you, is this, well, it looks like this is the last slide. I think there's been some confusion about this in the public, and I just wanted to speak to that a little bit because what I'm hearing here in this presentation is a lot better than what I've heard through like, people were... The first kind of engagement I had on it was someone had read the article in the Courier, and they're like, you guys are going to light up a bunch of money doing, you know, bedazzling trash cans, you know, with glitter. And that's not at all what I hear you talking about today. Like, so I just, I think, I appreciate the intention of where you guys are coming from. I think it's, as it's presented to me, obviously, right now, I think it makes sense to go forward with this. The downtown is, in my mind, is an asset like any other asset that the city has, whether that's the airport, whether that's our lakes. This is an asset that drives tourism. I think about when I came here for the first time thirty years ago, being downtown was kind of this awe-inspiring moment that I think sometimes as residents, we lose sight of that. But every so often, you can be down there and kind of recapture it. And so we really do need to invest in maintaining this asset because it is the thing that pulls people into Prescott and makes them think, wow, this is amazing. People don't, people don't, from other parts of the country, don't see communities that are, have downtowns like the way ours is set up. So I think, from where I sit, based on what I'm hearing, I've heard no talk of glitter and bedazzlement of trash cans. So I think it makes sense to invest. And also, ultimately, it does, I like how you framed it as, it's a win-win. We can kind of bolster our Public Works Department, which I think is a big deal because for years, we've been hearing about how they're running kind of on the bone in multiple departments. And as long as, you know, we're not, I forgot his name, is it Kevin? Kevin. As long as Kevin still has a home, like, I think this is a good deal. So I'm appreciative of this. The only thing I would say is something got lost in translation with some of the outreach that happened with this. And so I think really kind of hammering home to folks, hey, what we're doing is we're enhancing, we're building upon our successful downtown that everyone knows and loves, and we're not glitter-bombing downtown. We are just making it nice.
Thank you for your feedback. I will make sure that that's better clarified, and we will extend the outreach message.
I appreciate all the detail. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Thank you, Mayor. This is absolute music to my eyes, having been a downtown resident for many years and a business owner. And it's amazing what happens at night between eight o'clock and five o'clock in the morning in the downtown area. And I do see some business owners here, and I was wondering, did anybody consult with the business owners independently about some of the needs, as we all know, when you have a business down there that happened overnight? You know, if I'm, if I'm just looking at this as a breakdown, and I thought I saw the scope somewhere, but I can't seem to put my finger on it right now. I noticed here you've got feeling safe with the lighting, the green spaces. In the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, it, does the scope include? For example, I had a tree run over one night and knocked over. It ended up costing me six hundred dollars. Is that something that they'll replace? Or do they come to us and say, hey, somebody knocked a tree over in front of the wedding chapel? You need to pay for that. How does that work?
That's separate than what we're proposing for you today. So this slide is to explain that downtown beautification is really just an idea, and there's many elements that are part of it. What's before you today is the streetscapes, the sidewalks, the trash removal. We took the understanding that we need to start with something that's really clean before we add the beautification and the other details, more art, to it. If we, if we don't have it really clean first, then adding other beautiful details will get lost, and they won't be well-maintained because that bottom foundational structure is not there. So for your specific example, that would still probably happen the way that it did. But I would have to get more information on where the tree was, who owned the tree, all of those things.
Well, I did hear, just as Brandon did, we heard from a couple of people that complained about the hundred and twenty-five thousand. But I started to think about it. If I'm looking at the labor and the materials, I'm not sure what Kevin made a year. I guessed at forty thousand. If you take the forty thousand and deposit that back into the Public Works Department, and then you look at the materials, it would be, unless I'm missing something else, there's just a couple of components. So yes, it is a little bit more expensive if Kevin, you know, did make forty thousand. And again, I don't know. But we're just not that far off, especially if some of the materials are included in it, like the dumping fees. I mean, there's a lot of parts that go into that.
Well, I would like to speak to that because the cost of a full-time staff member is not just their salary, it's their benefits as well. And I'm not the H R expert in the room, but I know that even our lowest-paid staff member is significantly higher. And the fact that we get a crew of people and their equipment for a hundred and twenty-five thousand is a fantastic deal, if you ask me.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I love this proposal. I am the liaison to the Prescott Downtown Partnership. And it was so interesting because the group was the one who was saying, we've got to regularly power wash, steam clean downtown. The shop owners can't keep up with it. And if you recall from our Polco survey, you know, we ended up, in the case of our economy and some of the drivers of what people like about our economy, Prescott as a place to visit was much higher than the benchmark of the United States. So we've got to keep the polish on that if we want to continue to fuel the economy. And then the vibrancy of a downtown and commercial areas, also much higher. And I also agree that when you show up early in the morning downtown on the weekends, it's not shiny. And so I'm really excited about this. I know the whole PDP backs this up. I've talked to also a few other business owners around the plaza, and everybody is like, we've got to get to power washing, just them with a hose or a bucket isn't keeping up with the amount of tourism. So it's not, and I think that was one of the misperceptions in the initial story, was that it was about events. And the events have to pay for their own cleanup on the plaza, empty the trash cans, clean the bathrooms. It's, it is strictly about a great problem to have, which is a lot of people come here, and they have a lot of fun. So, you know, we want to continue that. And for, you know, if you have an excess in the bed tax dollar, I think this is a good proposal. I love learning, so let's give it a try. Let's learn and see if we... Let's learn and see if we can get it better. And I do agree with Ted, clean uniforms, smiley, happy people cleaning, it's a good vibe. My only other question was for Public Works, because I know some weekends, you know, it's busy downtown, like the Bluegrass Festival and a few of the bike tournaments. Is there anything more we need to think about for that photo of the overflowing trashcan, dumpster bin, actually, in the alley? Is there something else we need to do along with the cleaning? Because if we clean, 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 but we're not getting the trash out, I don't know if this third party is going to haul the trash out so it doesn't look bad, or whether we need to also add something on top of that for the biggest weekends of all. Not every weekend, but the biggest weekends.
Our vision is that it's included. So the trash removal, the sweeping, the vacuuming, the power washing, it is, all the services bundled as one. And they are responsible for Zone 1, doing all four of those to the level that we need them done at, no matter if it's an event weekend or not.
Well, thank you, Christina. I'll echo and reinforce all the statements that have been made so far. You know, we spend a lot of bed tax and tourism marketing dollars in some of these conventions around the country to attract tourists here. But now that we're going to invest in making sure that our downtown is sparkling, clean, and welcoming, when they do arrive, they're going to have the word-of-mouth that'll bring additional tourists and repeat tourism.
Absolutely.
Because they see that downtown core area is well-kept, and when they compare it to many places around the country, it's so much nicer and so much more attractive. And being able to have the reinforcement of all our memorials on the Courthouse Plaza, our Western Heritage, and our history reinforced, I think it makes so much sense. And this is almost like the concept of community policing. When Rudy Giuliani was the mayor of New York City and made sure that all the broken windows and the graffiti and the tagging were cleaned up, then that caused a resurgence of interest in tourism in Times Square and those other places. So I think this kind of fits right in with that. I know when I proposed a number of years ago that we replace all those broken-down plastic flyer boxes that were scattered all around the Courthouse Plaza with those nice containers that ever since then have, they've held up pretty much, other than a few stickers now that I have to scrape off. But as far as marking and things like that, it just has a much, a much cleaner look. I remember standing outside of Lone Spur, and there were a couple of people on the corner that normally would be looking at these multi-colored plastic containers with the broken doors and everything on it. And they were looking, and they were, I heard them say, "I'm not sure what's different, but it sure looks nice around here." And they were standing right in front of that new metal container. So I think investments like this really do pay off.
Thank you.
And I'm glad to hear that we have a sufficient amount of, I won't call it excess, but maybe surplus funding to be able to pay for it, and then be able to have a vendor that we can monitor and hold accountable for getting the job done the way we expect. So I'm looking forward to this. Councilwoman Moore, you had another comment?
Please, Mayor, just a quick second. I think this is mostly for the public's understanding, and I appreciate what Lois brought up, that there is a special events committee that the city has. And anytime there is a special event in the city, that organization has to come to a meeting where Public Works is present, the Health Department is present, the community office is present for tourism, police are present, fire department is present, Public Works is present. And every organization that wants to host a special event in the City of Prescott has to go through this committee, and they have to provide their own law enforcement if they're serving alcohol. They have to provide their own trash removal, their own cleanup, their own breakdown. And so, this is like Lois brought up and you're explaining, this is not changing any of that. That is still going to be required of every organization that wants to have a special event in the City of Prescott.
That's correct.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Just quickly, Christina, you mentioned vacuuming twice, and I'm trying to, like, what's getting vacuumed, out of curiosity?
Do you want to take that one? I learned a bunch of new terms.
I was just curious, because it's not like there's miles of carpet, right?
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Mayor. Yeah, so it's basically sweeping. So they use, we, we, the city, actually have a, what's known as a Timco vacuum sweeper. So that's just the vacuuming of the streets. So the process would be getting a lot of the debris off the sidewalks out into the street. Contractor would have then its vacuum or broom, mechanical, as it's known, sweeper, come and pick that stuff up.
Gotcha. Makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. For my final slide, again, downtown beautification is the idea that ties back to our strategic plan. And the proposal before you is one component of it. But our vision is for you guys to accept this initiative and direction for the Office of Tourism, and then maybe someday we come to you with a lighting proposal, or maybe we work with another department and have a tree planting project. Or maybe someday down the road, we talk about more ADA-compliant parking. Or maybe someday down the road, we talk about working with another department to talk about more light paths or public restrooms. So we see this being the umbrella that houses many projects that could improve or revitalize the downtown area. And with that, we will take any questions or any other directions you have.
Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Oh, come on, you guys. You came in here just to watch us and listen to us?
Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
We know you guys are behind us.
Public comment, Matt Bressard, Matt Saloon. We, I think all of us business owners fully support this. You know, it's, it's been an ongoing thing, and, you know, the alley behind Whiskey Row, we've had a lot of issues with, you know, the trash buildup on, after big weekends. So this would be greatly appreciated. And the sidewalk spills, you know, that sometimes are there for a month or two, or whatever. So we like it. Thank you.
So that does bring up a concern. I know sometimes after a big weekend like that, and we have those overflowing trash containers, we also have a lot of grease and other debris in that center part of the alley that makes it a little dangerous to even walk down there. Is this going to be covered as well, or would that be separate?
So within this contract, I think the way it's written, Mayor, is that it will be on an as-needed basis. It's not always like that. Street maintenance does go in there and do that from time to time. Once, twice a year, we'll have the big events that come through, or something will happen, one of the grease bats from the restaurant spill over, get overfilled, and we'll go in and clean it. It's a little more technical in that we don't want that stuff washed into the drainage system. We want clean drains. So there's some apparatus that has to be put in, and I think the way we've asked the contractors to bid it to us is on an as-needed basis, because that'll have to be an element of that as well. So yes, that, that will be a part of it, but it will be intermittent on as-needed, if that answers the question.
Yeah, it's a good point. Thanks, Brian.
You're welcome.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Yeah, you know, I did want to pay you a compliment. One of the things I have noticed over the years, since I have lived downtown for almost 20 years now, the bigger the event, the further out people park. And I always know, I can gauge how many people are there by, if they've made it all the way up Goodwin parking, and down Washington, and down every single street, then we know, we just see the constant barrage of people coming. In the past, it took several days, like on Halloween night, all the candy wrappers that are all up and down Goodwin and all the other streets are parking. And I've noticed now that your crew, or whoever's been doing it, is getting on it, like, the next morning, to get all of that stuff cleaned up. And I just wanted to compliment you, because the difference is stark. I cannot believe how quick. There used to be weeks would go by before they'd get to the candy wrappers up in, you know, our area, the downtown area.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. And that, that credit, I think, should go to, like, the sweeper operators, because that kind of stuff is actually literally picked up by the sweepers as the events go on. We do try to concentrate around those areas, and right now, our sweeper operators are in the downtown area every Monday and Friday morning in support of Kevin. As Kevin goes through his process during the weekend, Saturdays and Sundays, there's no sweeping. But then on Mondays especially, we have two street sweepers that go down and sweep every street that it's sectioned off. One sweeper has this side, and one sweeper has the other. So we've worked really hard, and Kevin, bless his heart, has done a great job. But like Christina said, he's one guy. And everybody in the room knows that it's getting busier and busier and busier. Every, every year, it seems like we have more and more visitors, more and more residents that are participating in these events, and it just becomes more and more difficult for Kevin to keep up with it. So with this proposal, I think it, it does benefit us that we get that FTE. He works for street maintenance. On Mondays, he's on the crew for 10 hours. When it snows, he's in a snowplow. He's not downtown cleaning. That's, I think, another important aspect to bring up, that during snow events, this, this contractor will be expected to still perform those duties as best he can, given the weather conditions. Kevin doesn't do that. If we're on snow shift for, for eight days, Kevin's out of downtown for eight days. So I think there's so many benefits, and so, so much goes in to the process that, that this is really, really helpful, so.
So Brian, did your, did you, did the city purchase, and I'm just taking a wild guess at this, a different type of a street sweeper with the vacuum applicant, like, maybe four or five years ago? Because they would come through before with the street sweepers, but it was just a big pile of dust.
Yeah.
Now they seem to be sucking it up.
We did. We actually, well, we've stayed with a Timco sweeper in the very beginning with the vacuum, the regenerative air sweepers. We shared one with the airport. It worked well. The, the, the real true intent for, for regenerative air sweeper is actually water quality, believe it or not, because it can pick up so much more dust and so many things. The problem with regenerative air sweepers, they are astronomical in the, in the cost of maintenance.
Yeah, I bet.
And then repairs, because they are of a much more complicated machine than a, than a mechanical broom sweeper is. And I'll be honest with you, I don't intend on asking for another one of those machines, because it costs so much money. And as far as a water quality stance goes, we haven't seen a lot of improvement because of those purchases.
Well, it's, it's 100% different in what it does. It is really surprising how quickly it cleans, and the void of the major dust cloud that it would kick up. In fact, it really, it just kind of displaced all the dirt. It really never got rid of it. It does now, though.
And they don't always do that from a mechanical standpoint. Typically, when a regenerative air sweeper is doing that, there is some mechanical issue that's happening. So it doesn't do it all the time. It does happen. One of the boots will get a hole in it, part of the pickup head will, will get plugged or something, but it doesn't happen all the time. But their intent is not to do that. And honestly, the regenerative air sweepers of all the vacuum sweepers, they're the only ones, the rest of them do that. They just do. So you're right. I agree with you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
To bring us back, staff is looking for direction. Can we continue to pursue a cooperative contract? Should we go out for a full RFP? Either way, whenever we decide the winning contract, we'll bring it back to you for approval. Our hope is the end of the calendar year.
Councilwoman Forworth.
I have no input on which way you go. I trust you all to make the right decision. When, it was interesting that you brought up community policing, because when I saw the last bubble chart, and the feeling safe, I get the lighting. But I also think, again, depending on what happens with Prop 478, we will be beefing up community policing and bike officers downtown. And so tying the presence of them somehow into the plan would be awesome, and, and bring more departments together working on that. And I just want to also congratulate you for your creativity and leadership in pulling this idea together. I know when I first heard it four months ago, I went, "What?" But you've seen it through, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Gambogi.
I want to commend you on a very complete, thorough presentation, and I have complete confidence that you'll make the right decision on which way to go.
Thank you.
Well, I for one think that this is a great effort, and I think it's certainly justified. But it's not a small contract. So I think it should be bid, and not only so that we can establish the scope for the vendor knows what they're expected to do, we can hold them accountable based upon the bid process. And they know that in order to get a renewed, they'll have to continue to, to perform. So I think we always should default to a, to a bid process. Any other comments? No? Councilman Montoya.
I just, I will echo what others have said. I just trust you guys to figure out how to best shepherd this process through, whether it's a collaborative approach. I'm sure both, both approaches have their pluses and minuses, so do what you think is best. I think the overall direction of what you're doing is the right thing.
Thank you.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
Yes, and I'll echo everybody here too, but I do, you know, really want to stress the importance of a performance section in the contract. There's got to be benchmarks. We can't just leave it open. And make sure that the scope is so detailed, overdetail it, because there's a lot of, this is not a standard downtown. We've got a lot of historic buildings. Things have to be taken care of in a certain way. So I'd make sure that you cover all the bases on that, so that there's clarity going into it.
Of course.
Thank you.
Any other comments or concerns? Any other public comment out there? Nobody's lined up?
Well, thank you all for your feedback.
Thank you, Christina. That was a great presentation.
And thank you for the business owners who initially brought this idea, and for our team and the extensive research that went into trying to come together, and for Public Works and all the meetings we had at trying to even get this idea off the table. So it's definitely a team effort, and we're thrilled to come back and see you at the end of the year with a contract.
Councilwoman Gambogi.
I don't think we've given Christina consensus on direction about how to go forward.
All right, then I will poll the council. Councilman Montoya.
I'll reiterate what I've said before, which is I trust the Office of Tourism and Public Works to figure out how to best bring this back before us, whether that's a collaborative approach with an outside contractor or a bid process.
Councilman Moore.
I think an RFP would be appropriate.
Councilwoman Forworth.
I'll reiterate what I said before. Do what you think is best, experts.
Mayor Protam can tell me.
I'd like to see a bid process myself. I want to make sure that it's a level playing ground for everybody to be involved in this. But again, the scope is very important.
Councilwoman Gambogi.
Choose your own path.
And I would go for an RFP, a bid process. So it sounds like you've got three to three here.
May I propose an idea?
Please do.
So the cooperative contract is out to bid currently with Yavapai County, and they are outlining the same scope of services that we would be looking for as well. So once they do their formalized bid process and it gets approved through procurement, we can propose the piggyback contract as well. So it shortens the window of doing the RFP, and the work can get started sooner. That is the biggest difference between the two. As far as staff's workflow, it's really the same. The cooperative contract is kind of the way to be more efficient in government, and please correct me if I'm wrong, it's not a preference, it's not better one way or another, because these, the bidding process happens either way. It just depends on who does it. The only thing that changes in the contracts, from what I'm understanding, is there's a paragraph that says this contract is available to be used by other government entities. And then that allows the City of Prescott to pick it up and say, "We're going to mirror this contract in same level of services." Okay.
And I might add too, if I may, we do use operated equipment through the county quite a lot. We do a lot of things that come up emergency-wise. We'll use contractors for stuff that needs to get done right away, but it's a smaller dollar amount. So they are very convenient, they're pretty clean and seamless as far as the procurement process and whatnot goes. And I, in my opinion, it might be a better way to kick this off as a trial period. I heard somebody mention, "Give this a try. Let's see how it works." This would be a way to do that. I feel very clean, very seamless. The scope is, is pretty much written, and it is very tight. They, they will understand exactly what they're supposed to do, and Public Works will make sure that they, they stay that course as, as the term of this contract goes through. If it works out and it does great for the first year or so, then maybe we go out for an RFP, see if we can't get a better, a better price with the same level of expectation and scope.
I think that's acceptable to me, because that in general then already pre-identifies the scope. We're going to be probably sharing a vendor with the county.
Correct.
And of course, surrounding the Courthouse Plaza and have the county be within the Courthouse Plaza makes a lot of sense as well.
It does.
And then, you're right, we can monitor how well it works. And if we need to improve it, or modify the scope descriptions and things like that, then we can do that down the road. Mayor Protam?
So just so I understand, in the public, you're, you're suggesting that we're going to piggyback on the same contractor that the county is using, hoping that it'll be better and more efficient that he does everything, or whoever owns the company. Is that right? So they're in the process right now?
They're in the bid process.
Okay.
So, we're, we're talking about two things here. The contract and the vendor are two separate things. We can use their contract, but not necessarily their same vendor. But we could use their same vendor and their same contract also. So it just kind of depends on what they outline, what bids come back with. Either it matches our scope, or it doesn't. But because they're already in this process, it's just maybe a little fission, or maybe a little faster to see what they come up with, and then go from there. If it matches, great. If not, then we will probably end up having to go out for bid anyways.
Okay, so there is a potential that we end up using the same contractor that's chosen by the county?
Correct.
Which makes sense to me also. It is probably better to have them do the whole area. But I just wanted that for clarification.
Yes, of course.
Thanks.
And the county is creating this cooperative contract? They're not just...
So this is an annual contract?
...utilizing one that already exists?
Yeah, this is an annual contract that goes out to multiple contractors. Multiple vendors are on this contract for multiple different things. Anything from concrete work to paving work to cleaning up trash and debris, and flood cleanup, and drainage cleanup. There's multiple vendors on the contract, and this is, this has been an ongoing process for the county for many years now, as I understand it. We've personally been, it's street maintenance, utilities uses it too. They fund stuff for them. You've heard us come to council asking for money for the Yavapai County operated equipment and operated hauling contracts, two separate contracts. But this is something they've been doing for a long time that we've been piggybacking off of for the last several years.
If I may address, these cooperative purchase agreements are procurement processes, not contracting processes. So it's essentially where another government entity is going through the bidding process and establishes pricing that is competitive in nature, and then the city enters in their own contract. So the scope has to be similar. That's kind of what they mentioned. But it's not about the contracting part of it. It's about the, the procurement part. The bidding part is done by another agency.
Okay, I think you have your direction, Christina.
Yes. The cooperative contract first, and we'll be back to see you later this year. Thank you so much.
Looking forward to this. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much. You're very welcome.
Give our regards to Kevin.
We sure will. And I assure you, he'll be safe and sound. He'll just move right back into us instead of progress. Just be in with us on Tuesday. He'll be with us Monday through Thursday, so.
I keep meaning to get up at 3:00 AM and shake his hand, but for some reason, my alarm just doesn't work that early.
Well, I can, I can understand that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.